Please remember to turn off your cell phones. And the parking validation machine for the garage under City Hall is located in the rear of the chambers, but hopefully all of you rode a bike here or took public transit. So now we're going to do the salute to the flag. So, in terms of roll call, we have everyone here except Commissioner Oliverio. And now we need the summary of hearing procedures, which I believe is recorded and can be played.
Welcome to a meeting of the San Jose Planning Commission. The following is a summary of the Planning Commission's hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After the staff report, applicants and appellants may make a five-minute presentation. The chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received. As your name is called, please line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed, and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and a binder of all staff reports have been placed on the table near the door for your convenience. Thank you.
Great. So, the next item on the agenda is number two, public comment. This is the agenda item where if members of the public wish to comment on any item that is not on the agenda, this is the time. I don't have any speaker cards, so I'm going to assume that no one in the audience wants to comment under this particular item. And seeing no movement in the audience, we'll go to number three, which is deferrals and removals from the calendar. And it says there are no items here. So, we'll move on to the consent calendar. There are also no items on consent, which brings us to the public hearing, number five. So, we are going to go ahead and get started with staff reports.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Brent Carvalho. I am the project manager for Agenda Item 5A, which is aimed at accomplishing two goals. The first, removing the sidewalk cafe permit requirement from the zoning ordinance so that sidewalk seating can be approved through the Department of Public Works Minor Encroachment Permit. And the second, revising the concurrent review process to allow additional actions to be considered through a unified hearing process. Currently sidewalk cafes are permitted through the Planning Department's Sidewalk Cafe Permit. These permits are also reviewed by the Department of Public Works and the Fire Department. The proposed changes will remove the permit from Title 20 and allow sidewalk seating to be permitted through the Public Works Minor Encroachment Permit, which will be regulated by new outdoor seating regulations that will be adopted by Public Works. Historically, approval of sidewalk cafes, which are essentially seating on the sidewalk typically associated with restaurants, has been the responsibility of the Planning Department, while parklets, which replace street parking in the public right-of-way, have been the responsibility of Public Works. Discussion around improving the process for outdoor seating has focused on the need for streamlining the process as well as maintaining it, as making it available for more types of businesses to offer outdoor seating options. After working together with Public Works, it was determined that the Minor Encroachment Permit process would be the best way to establish sidewalk seating in the public right-of-way. Since Public Works is responsible for public right-of-way and has the technical experience to evaluate proposed outdoor seating uses, removing sidewalk cafes from Title 20 and merging the sidewalk seating and parklet program together under the Minor Encroachment Permit process will also allow the option for businesses and property owners that might be interested in creating a combination of both sidewalk seating and parklets. Furthermore, as part of this change, the new regulations are adopted administratively by the Director of Public Works, which means they will not have to go through a public hearing process to be updated in order to revise them based on future needs or innovations. Whereas if the regulations for sidewalk seating were to remain in Title 20, it would require approval of an ordinance anytime that changes were made. With regard to concurrent review, concurrent review is a process which allows certain permits and approvals for a single project that might otherwise be reviewed through separate hearing bodies to be acted upon in a unified process that follows the highest level permit or approval. An example of a new development project which can utilize concurrent review is a 24-hour gym. Constructing a new building for a gym would require a site development permit, which can be approved by the Director of Planning, whereas the 24-hour use requires a conditional use permit, which would be heard by the Planning Commission. Through concurrent review, both actions can be reviewed together by the higher-level hearing body, in this case, the Planning Commission. An example of a project that was not able to utilize concurrent review is the Adobe Building. The new office building was approved through a site development permit at a planning director's hearing. However, the bridge which joins the existing building with the new expanded office building crosses over a public street, requiring a major encroachment permit, which had to be approved by the city council. If they had been eligible for concurrent review, the full project could have been reviewed and approved by city council in one approval process. This ordinance change will allow the addition of development agreements, major encroachments, and street enisement vacations to the list of actions that can be considered under concurrent review. This will effectively help to avoid multiple hearings by different hearing bodies for actions that often go together and are integral to construction of a proposed development. And now I will turn it over to Ryan Doe to talk a little bit about the regulations for outdoor seating in the public right-of-way.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Ryan Doe with Public Works. I'm here to provide some additional information related to the sidewalk seating and parklet program and proposed regulations. But first, just additional brief history on the ordinance amendments, the program and coordination effort as it relates to parklets and sidewalk seating. In June of 2017, council approved a ordinance amendment to Chapter 1336 of Title 13 and adding Chapter 1337 of Title 13 to govern private encroachment within the city public right-of-way. Chapter 1337 also authorized the Director of Public to approve minor encroachment permit within the public right-of-way. It also provides the Director of Public Works the authority to adopt administrative regulations, rules for minor encroachment. In October 2017, staff presented to the CED, the Community and Economic Development Committee, with a status report and recommendation to formalize the program and propose amendment to address stakeholders' concerns. At that time, the program was just a pilot program. In December 2017, council accepted staff report and proposed to formalize the parklet program and regulate it through Chapter 1337. Staff at that time informed council that amendments to Title 20 are required and that staff will return to council for approval. Since then, both PBC and Public Works staffs have conducted several coordination meetings with other city departments such as Office of Economic Development, Police, and Transportation to develop the regulations. We also held stakeholder meetings with business property owners, downtown associates, and council office District 3, and received positive feedback based on those proposed regulations. So now going to the proposed regulations for sidewalk seedings. We want to clarify, for sidewalk seating, there's a couple categories I want to go through. First is just eligible applicants. We want to clarify that it is for front and ground floor business owner and operator. For allowable use, we wanted to expand the use to dining and private customer seedings. Again, this is for sidewalk seating. As far as operation hours, we want to clarify that it's the same as the business hours, but not past 12:00 a.m. As far as locations, instead of citywide, we want to limit to downtown neighborhood business districts, urban village, specific planned area, and historic districts. Obviously, with related to municipal code, we discussed that it's going to fall into Title, Chapter 1337 rather than Chapter 20. Permitting fees will be through, permitting will be through Public Works rather than planning. And fee, as far as fee, it will be just Public Works review fee only. We are also allowing incidental sidewalk seating, which is currently not allowed, and also potential, an expedited process for those proposal. For the parklet program, again, same category, we are expanding to allow different applicants, front-ground-floor business operator, fronting property owners, as well as business associations, for example, downtown associations. For use, we also want to expand the use of it, instead of just dining and retail seating. It's dining for public eating establishment, private seating, but also through the outreach process, we wanted to open to public seating and bike parking. Hours of operations, we want to expand it to 7:00 a.m. to midnight. During the business hours, it would be private use, but during outside business hours, it would be public use. Location-wise, similar type of locations as sidewalk seating. And code applications is the same as sidewalk seating. Chapter 1337, as discussed. And then regarding permitting, we would minimize it to one permit through Public Works rather than having two permits, one for planning and one for Public Works. And review fee would just be review fee from Public Works. That concludes my report. Here to answer any questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to add a little more background. So, maybe about four, is it four years ago now? Danny, I call him Danny Knight, Danny Harris from the Knight Foundation, paid for a number of us from Planning, as well as Ryan Sebastian from Movable Feast, and some other nonprofit and for-profit organizations to go to Detroit to look at the idea of what they call a pink zone, I think, which is basically you go light on the red tape and you allow things to happen organically. What we found, of course, is Detroit is like the Old West. Anything goes, there's no rules really at all. But the idea of going there was just to learn how we could be more loose and try to streamline processes to facilitate place-making, activation of the right-of-way, and create a more vibrant, active city. So this really came out of that. It's part of a larger effort, which Harry Frayd has termed easy urbanism. It sounds kind of like a hip-hop term, but it's called easy urbanism, and we're doing a number of efforts to facilitate place-making. So this is part of that effort that started, I'm forgetting, I think it was about three years ago, we went to Detroit.
Commissioner Leva.
Yes, a question for staff. So, if I'm understanding this right, we're sort of, we're bringing the permit requirement together, putting it all in Public Works. They will have just one fee instead of multiple fees in different departments. On the screen, it looks like the fees, at least the numeric values there, go up, but you're not showing the various other fees that get paid. So would fee, what's a recent, a reasonable benchmark for a restaurant that's looking to put, you know, 20 seats out? Like, what are they paying right now, fully loaded? It looks like it's going to go to, well, this is the Curb Cafe, but it looks like it's going to go to 774 for the parklet and the sidewalk seating? I guess I'm just trying to understand how this, you know, apples-to-apples dollar comparison, and I know that it's going to vary by location and specific, but can we get like an order of magnitude on that?
So, if I understand the question correctly, there, usually we coordinate with other departments, fire departments, police, and so we're trying to establish regulations where we get all those inputs already, and through Public Works review, we would ensure that those requirements are met. Therefore, it's really minimizing to one department review, therefore one fee. So it varies depending on our location, whether they would be involved in the current process right now.
Okay. So you mean whether fire needs to be involved, or who gets engaged?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't, we don't have like a rough sense of what that costs on average? It's a huge swing, then?
I'm looking it up right now. One second.
Okay. And then maybe we could go to my other question while she's looking that up. So my other question was, I heard in the presentation, and I don't remember reading it, that the rules are, by being in the public workspace and taken out of the zoning ordinance, they become administrative. Therefore, the Director of Public Works can just change them whenever he feels like it?
So, as mentioned in the report, yes, the Chapter 1337 allows the Director to create the regulations. Obviously, we would coordinate with other departments as mentioned, as well as the stakeholders to see, obviously, we're going to monitor these programs and see what works, what doesn't work, and adjust it accordingly. But hopefully, we can streamline the process of changing those requirements or regulations through just the Public Works approval, Director approval.
Okay. So the Public Works Director would be setting them, and then he could update them?
Correct.
But the idea is just to be able to iterate and kind of do this faster?
Correct, correct. And we're not going to do it.
I'm okay with that. I'm trusting in Mr. Cano here, but hopefully, you know, future Public Works Directors will be as thoughtful. What's that?
Women, possible.
Sure. But right now, it's Matt Cano, if memory serves, in Public Works.
Correct.
Okay. So did we get an answer on kind of a rough order of magnitude on the cost?
Yeah, so right now, everyone has to pay a Public Works and a Fire fee, and that comes out to $548 as kind of your baseline.
Plus the $600 that's on the planning side.
Well, so right now, for the planning side, for sidewalk cafes, there is no fee. That was removed a couple years back. There did used to be a permit fee.
Okay.
In an effort to kind of lower the fees, we did take the fee away.
So is this for the Curb Cafe? I mean, I'm seeing 600 on the bottom, well, it's the middle of the screen, but it's in the left corner.
Yeah, so the $548 is for the sidewalk cafe, and then if you, the current rules, if you got, or the Curb Cafe pilot rules, was that if you wanted a Curb Cafe, you actually also had to apply for the sidewalk cafe permit, so you had to pay the $548 plus the $600.
Okay. So then we're taking the fee down from 1,200-ish down to 774. So not quite cutting it in half, but that's a pretty good reduction. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Oliverio.
A question on, thank you, Chair. A question on the fee, I'm sorry, that you just had, isn't the new fee proposed to be annual versus the other one was a one-time cost? Because you have on your PowerPoint, annual renewal, and on the first one, it doesn't state that. So just trying to clarify, is the left side a one-time fee, and then the right side is a fee that's a subscription or annual?
That is, so the 774 is a one-time fee for review and inspections of the installations through the coordination effort of other departments and stakeholders. There was some concern about maintenance of these facilities and keeping up with insurance and responsibility for those facilities. So we are looking into whether it's an annual review, or if they are kind of compliant, in compliance with what's required, then we do maybe a three-year or five-year review of it to make sure, again, part of the requirement is to have them to provide insurance so that if something happens in this area, that is covered. So that's the annual review. But we don't anticipate that being a huge number or something.
Okay. So when I see plus annual renewed fee, doesn't mean the 774 is every year?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, great. And the, the business owner or property owner, they are 100% responsible for the maintenance of what is built on, for example, in a parklet?
That's correct.
And then, and at this point, the Public Works Director or staff that's on the project would approve the aesthetic value or quality or materials that are proposed in the parklet?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Griswold.
Couple of brief, brief questions. The first one is, I'm wondering if you can clarify what the difference is between the seating and dining that they would have under their permit and the incidental use seating that's now allowed?
So for the sidewalk seating, so the incidental use is if you want to set up like a table and two chairs or something, you just want to put it out there and move it at the end of the night. The sidewalk seating, potentially, you could have railings in an enclosed area for, within the sidewalk that has tables and chairs that remain there.
So these are sort of like a bonus, or what are they exactly? I'm just trying to visualize what, what it would be, like if you would have a sidewalk area where they'd normally have six tables or 10 tables, is this an extra two tables that they could have with four chairs, or what is it exactly?
So really, the intent between, behind the incidental seating is to create kind of a simpler process for a business that wants to just throw a couple tables outside on the sidewalk, because that doesn't need the same level of review as somebody that has to construct a barrier because they want to sell alcohol and wants to do some, some sort of a more permanent installation. So the intention behind that is almost like sidewalk seating light, to just create a simpler permit process. If I have a restaurant and I say, hey, there's a little sidewalk space, could I throw a chair out there? We can say, yep, really easily, without having to do the same level of review that we would for somebody that would do, or Public Works would do, for somebody that would do the, you know, the more permanent installation.
Okay. All right. I was confused. I thought this was a, something that was on top of the permit that you get, not a separate sort of more expedited process. And just, since we've been talking about fees, does that have a lower fee associated with it? Or do you have a proposed fee associated with the incidental sidewalk seating application?
Right now, we haven't established, but the thinking is that it would take staff probably an hour, and that's around 100 or 150.
The second point, which is a really minor, I guess, thing that I noticed with the language, in Section 20.100.14, sidewalk seating and parklets, in the first line, it says for sidewalk seating or parklets in the public right-of-way, refer to the procedures for encroachment permits pursuant to Chapter 13.37. And I would just suggest that you change the word pursuant to step forth under, which is very minor, but I thought I'd point it out while we've got the chance to change the language.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank staff for the two-slide presentation we got here with the chart, which helped me understand this issue a lot better than reading the staff report initially. So thank you very much for that. I am a visual thinker, a lot of us are, but I appreciate that. And thank you so much to the commissioners with their pertinent questions regarding the fees, because that was the only area where I had some confusion as well. So my questions have been answered. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Yezny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to talk about something that has nothing to do with sidewalk seating. Is everybody through with their, everybody asked their questions on that subject? My questions have to do with the concurrent processing. Did the city council express a concern that somehow they wanted to have more say in site development permits? Or they were concerned about site development? As opposed to, just, that's the question first.
No, this actually was initiated by staff based on kind of our own experience of having these, these actions go through different hearings. It wasn't initiated by the council.
Because, I can understand, conditional use permits, there's a use. Development agreements, I thought for years, the whole project should go to council. They shouldn't be approving a development agreement without the project. But a site development permit is a use that's allowed by right, and it is entirely a design review. And probably nobody thinks the council has a high level of, as a whole, has a high level of expertise, Mr. Oliverio, my apologies, in design review, which means that the staff is still going to have to do a complete design review. But unlike under the current system, they're also going to have to write a detailed council-level staff report that deals with whatever the encroachment permit or the other issue is. So there's going to be more staff time put into it, and then we're going to take what is supposed to be a relatively straightforward process and turn it over to an inherently political body. And I, I, the council has a huge workload already. They deal with the most complex issues that are happening in this city, and I just don't believe that this is going to be a good thing for anybody. The encroachment permits, because they're in the public right-of-way, and there's, there's sort of an inherent issue that there's a hazard, it's, it's an aberration. I can understand that the council needs to deal with those. Any encroachment into city streets of any substance, the council should deal with it. But I just don't believe that we should take something that should be a pure staff-level function and make the council have to deal with it.
Commissioner Yezny, I have a little bit of background on this, because we, I get asked this question a lot, and so does the Public Works Attorney. And what happens with some applications, and I'm sorry, I don't have much of a voice tonight. What happens with some applications is that one of the permits needs to go to council, and it's a matter of timing. Who goes first? What's on second? So for example, your example with the encroachment permit, the encroachment permit goes to council, but the encroachment permit is only valid and only takes, you know, if the Director approves, right, the permit, the other permit. If the Director approves the site plan permit, then what happens is, excuse me, the, whatever permit they're looking at at the Director's level, then what happens is it's contingent upon the council approving, and it becomes very confusing for applicants. It is somewhat more intensive and laborious for staff. The applicants don't get it. They would prefer to go to one hearing generally, and I think that is why the recommendation is going forward. Because I have no trouble conditioning approvals on somebody else's approval. But one of the things is that people also worry, okay, if the Director approves it first, what if the council doesn't approve the encroachment permit?
Then they can't build the bridge across the street.
Right. But then, but then the council might want to know, why don't we have the decision-making authority over this entire project? And vice versa. If the council does the encroachment permit first, then is it pressure upon a Director to approve a plan that they may not necessarily agree with also? So that's one of, that is one of the issues that I see constantly, and I think that's why staff is proposing the merger of some of these, in that they go through concurrent approval.
I guess I understand that. And certainly, there's something kind of hinky about the council approving something conditional on a subordinate decision, in which case we could say, the last decision is the council's. And they also have the authority, I think. And they also have the authority, I think, to call in, to review anything that's been done by a subordinate group. They may not, well, they can review anything they want. They don't have the approval-denial. But if they, there are a lot of things in development that may not make sense to people, having just gotten my first building permit. But nevertheless, this, this, the staff isn't going to save any of their time. It's going to extend them into more time. It's going to take longer. A director's hearing can, takes place every week. Scheduling something for the council is much more time-consuming, and there's no guarantee that it'll make it on a specific date. There's a lot of issues associated with this, and it just, to someone that has been part of the development process, doesn't seem like good government. It doesn't seem like it's a good thing for the city or for the, even for applicants that may think this sounds counterintuitive, but wait until they get their approved project before the council, and every council member wants to point out something they don't like about the design, which is an exaggeration. I'm being funny. Sorry.
Commissioner Alvario?
Thank you, Chair. Based on Commissioner Yezny's comments, for the city attorney or staff, could this process of consolidation for concurrence, could it be done as a final stop as a director's hearing for just this narrow use, rather than to go to council?
Not with regard to development agreements, at least. Those need to be approved by ordinance, and that is a city council action only. With regard to the encroachment, perhaps, but we haven't looked into that. This is not a piece of work that I did. I just was aware of the problem because the questions continue to come up.
Okay.
You know? And that's why I expressed that. It can go either way. We can keep, you know, obviously, permits will be issued. If it has to go through two bodies instead of one, the way that it is currently, that works. If there's a desire to consolidate that the commission and the council agree with, then that works as well. But development agreements clearly could not go through a subordinate body.
So can there be clarification on a development agreement based on what the content is? In this case, it's a sidewalk dining parklet versus a developer agreement that would entail what maybe, for example, in the future, what Google might enter into as a developer? I mean, that, just two massive differences between the two? Or the way city ordinance, city charter works is that it must, any development agreement must go to council regardless?
It's state law.
It's state law?
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that, city attorney. And I just wanted to say that I concurred with Commissioner Yezny on the simplicity and trying to make things more streamlined, and if there are things that we can do at a director's hearing, that would seem to be the simple and fastest way. However, if it's a state law, then call your legislative representative.
Remember also that a number, that this consolidation basically is mostly with other legislative decisions that the council makes. For example, it's often coupled with zoning. And the council is the only authority that has, you know, is the only authority in the city that can adopt zoning ordinances as well. So it's usually coupled with other higher-level decision-making.
I'd just like to add that there are certain items, as mentioned in the report, that council also needs to approve as far as vacations and also major encroachment, which under 1337, only council can approve, not the director to approve. So there is some efficiency for staff to get all those items approved at the same time by council.
And vacation is required to go through council by state law as well.
So a question for staff, sorry, someone had a comment.
Jared Hart, Planning Division. I'd also add that this, what's proposed, provides an option for both staff and applicants that, so a site development permit could still be brought separately from a development agreement. It just provides an option if you want to go the route for one, one hearing.
Do most, are they usually on the consent calendar?
Since we haven't actually, you know, typically, we ask the public to speak if they want to. I don't have any speaker cards, so I was thinking I could officially close the public hearing, and then we can continue to talk. So Commissioner, so public hearing closed. Then Commissioner Allen, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually wanted to, we've heard commissioners asking, we've heard attorney comment. I have, the one thing I haven't heard is staff talking about their time and what this means as far as a change in terms of, is this going to take you more time, or is this going to take you less time on the whole to do? I understand if it's going to take more, and it's more convenient for the applicant. I think that should be our goal, frankly. But if I could hear staff comment on that, that'd be great, because I've heard everyone else comment on it.
Yeah, thank you. We haven't, you know, calculated hour by hour, but our instinct is it's kind of a wash, because if you're taking something to director's hearing, you're writing the permit anyway. If you're taking something to city council, you're writing a staff report anyway. And then if you're taking them both to council, you still need to write the draft permit, and you still need to write the staff report. I will say, yeah, there would be more analysis in the staff report on the project itself. So that is definitely true. So I guess that staff report would be a little bit longer, but other than that, the amount of paperwork's the same, with the exception of actually you're preparing one fewer, on the hearing notice, you could combine them. Yeah, it should be about wash, probably, maybe slightly, slightly longer staff report.
Or in, you know, an expansion of duties that is negligible, given the sheer volume of duties that you already have. And I'll go on record by saying I really respect our staff, and I wish you were paid more and had more time off to spend with your families. Ryan, did you have a?
Yeah, if I could add, from a public standpoint, it would be more efficient for us to go to one hearing, instead of taking a separate item to council for the, related to that project. So from our standpoint, if we do go to one hearing, there would be a benefit for public staff.
Okay, thank you, staff. I appreciate it, and that's the end of my questions for now.
Commissioner Leba?
So if I'm understanding this correctly, we have situations where certain items that are approved at multiple levels would then all come together and be approved at the highest level. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we have other items that currently are heard separately in different sections by council, potentially even on different hearing days? Is that correct? And those would come to one hearing?
That is correct. Yeah, so the three items that we're proposing to add are three items that currently aren't in the concurrent review, so those would need to go to separate hearings on separate days by separate hearing bodies. So the encroachment permit, the vacations, and then the development agreements. So this would consolidate them, but we already do have a pretty long list. So, for example, if you, someone filed a rezoning concurrently with a conditional use permit, then that could go to the city council. Or a site development permit, frankly, concurrently with a rezoning, already can go to the city council. So it's not a new concept that the council would be seeing site permits, they already do through, through the concurrent process. This just adds a couple more opportunities.
Okay, and then, so for those items, like a rezoning with a CUP coming together, would that come through the Planning Commission first, or it just goes straight to city council?
Under the current process, if it's a conforming rezoning, it actually would go straight to the council. If it's a non-conforming rezoning or a planned development rezoning, the municipal code requires the referral to the landmark, or, excuse me, the Planning Commission, but a concurrent, a conforming rezoning does not go through the Planning Commission.
Okay, so in the new world, it would just go straight to the city council? Did I understand that right?
That's in the current world. So zoning is already in the concurrent review list, so under the municipal code right now, yeah, it would go straight to the city council.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Griswold?
On the additional staff time question, if there, it turns out that there is more staff time for the unified review and the preparation of staff reports, would there be an option for the fees to reflect that? For example, if someone chooses a unified process and they're, they have a site development permit application as part of that, could you have a higher fee for the site development permit, knowing that you're going to prepare a sort of more in-depth report, if that turns out to be the case?
Yeah, yes, if we could justify that the time is more, we could definitely propose an amendment to the fee schedule to increase the fee.
And I guess the other question on that would be, with respect to the staff time, do you find yourself in a situation of where one staff member is working on, say, both a zoning component and the site development review, where you're attending multiple hearings regardless? Like you're attending a director's level hearing as well as a city council hearing? I'll let Jared answer that one.
I mean, I guess depending on the staff, typically, so the project managers would attend the director's level hearing, and then city council would be covered by the director or deputy director.
I'd like, sorry, I'd just like to add, for the items that we talked about, again, major encroachment and vacation, public staff would have to attend those additional hearings to address those items and provide a staff report for those items separately.
Just like an overall comment to address Commissioner Yezny, I think from the developers' perspective, that if it turns out that the unified process is not beneficial in terms of offering a more certain or efficient outcome, the fact that it's not a mandated option under this plan, where the developers can still choose the route that they think is best, really provides that flexibility to the development community. And at least from some of my conversations with people outside of here, there is that sense of, we have to go to so many different bodies, it's impossible to calculate the fees, that's a whole thing on its, on its own. And having that, injecting that uncertainty at various different components, especially when the sort of no-go part of it is at city council, and that's probably going to be the last thing that happens, is very detrimental to the certainty that's required to invest in these types of projects.
Commissioner Allen? Commissioner Yezny?
I have a couple of minor questions. Encroachment permits, vacation of right-of-way, are those usually on the council's consent calendar?
No, they're public hearing item.
Okay, well, public, that meaning they are never on the consent calendar?
That's correct.
Because we have public hearing items on the consent calendar all the time. So, but you're telling me you never do them as consent calendar?
That's correct.
Because I keep thinking of all the public works items that are on the consent calendar. I haven't read them, so, okay. Then, what? The, the staff report that's written for council is a fairly lengthy staff report in the planning. I mean, there's a format, it's a much more cumbersome preparation for something the council hasn't seen before. The director's hearing, the permit has to be prepared, but the permit's going to have to be prepared for an item that goes to council as well. So that's a wash, but anything that is done preparatory for the council meeting is going to be new work. The Public Works Department, do they normally attend the director's hearing?
We would attend director's hearing if public support is needed, if there's concerns about traffic or other issues, flood.
Okay. So, but you're saying that it isn't mandatory, and who decides if the concurrent process will go forward? The applicant? Project proponent?
Yeah, typically, it is the project proponent will request it.
And staff would not be in a position to recommend against it if the proponent wanted to, the whole thing to go to council together?
Yeah, staff finds it more efficient, so we don't tend to recommend against it.
Okay, I think that's all. I wanted to make clear that I think that development agreements should absolutely be heard concurrently. Development agreements being as, they lock in the project forever, and the council should be able to approve what they're locking, but it's not forever, but effectively forever. And a conditional use permit, there are some aspects to introducing a use that isn't allowed by right that might appropriately be considered by council. The only thing I'm objecting to in this ordinance is a site development permit going to council. I suspect it is not going to be more efficient. It does increase the burden on the city council, and it politicizes a process that I don't think by its nature should be political. Thank you.
Looks like we have exhausted the questions, so I would ask if my colleagues want to put forward a motion.
I move the staff recommendation.
Is there a second on that motion?
Oh, sure.
So first by Commissioner Leba, second by Commissioner Allen. Any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner Leba, did you want to speak to your motion?
Absolutely. So for the past three years at my employer, a large integrated investor-owned utility in Northern and Central California, I have been in charge of a program for integrated change control for project management and transmission and substation. And those of you who do project management for a living know that you have various types of scope changes, types of schedule changes, like re-baselining a project or extending the in-service date, et cetera, which, which in the case of, you know, a building, there are all sorts of deadlines and milestones that they're managing, and of course, cost changes. So in that program, what we've done is to try to bring the change requests together. And we have a form, and we have a little tool that people do or fill out called an integrated change request. And when we first rolled it out, it generated a lot of heartburn because, excuse me, because I'm getting choked up here just thinking about it. It generated heartburn because, per corporate delegation of authority, we needed to go to the highest level of approval for the type of change. Much like here, certain types of permits need to be approved at the city council. So I see it as a natural byproduct that some lower-level items are going to end up higher, but I would actually disagree with my highly esteemed colleague, so I was worried she would have some showstopper objection. I would disagree that it's necessarily a bad thing that lower items go up, because the value that you're providing by bringing these in for a concurrent review is that the council is seeing more of the project together, that staff is coming in for one request. In my world, users or project managers, project controls analysts, asset managers, they could be having to propose a change upwards of six or seven times to different bodies and having different, either meeting bodies, or vice presidents, or directors, or people all throughout the organization having to approve stuff, all related to the same root cause. So, so here, back into my Planning Commission role, here, I'm seeing that we want to bring these developments forward as one package, and anything we can do to consolidate those types of approvals, even if it means burdening the city council a little bit, it would be something I would support, because I think the bigger picture efficiency that we're gaining is worth it. So thank you for bringing this forward to us. I yield.
Commissioner Allen, did you want to speak to your second?
Well, since we're all here. No, but seriously, I want to thank staff again for bringing this forward, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for having a dialogue about your time and about what it takes for you to do your jobs. I think that should be integral to any conversation about new or revised policy or major projects, because at the end of the day, I don't know if this is true for San Jose, but a lot of public agencies, you're looking at, you know, 80% of your budget is spent on people. You know, it's not, we don't pay, we don't pay a ton of money for the green paint you see in the bike lanes. We pay for people to go out there and paint the bike lanes. So it's really important that we have that conversation at all times when we're talking about other things. And I appreciate your honesty, and I appreciate my commissioners' questions, and I will be done talking now, so we can get to a vote.
Any other folks want to comment on the motion? I'm going to ask the city attorney to clarify the motion.
I only wanted to ask the maker of the motion and the secondor whether or not the motion includes Commissioner Griswold's change to Section 20.100.1400 in the first sentence to change the words pursuant to to set forth in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does it, Mr. Secondor, do you second the modified motion to include Commissioner Griswold's edits?
As Commissioner Griswold is an attorney, and I am not, I will take her edit gladly. Thank you.
All right, then, let's go to a vote. I'm not seeing, there we go. All right, motion carries with one no vote from Commissioner Yezny. And so with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item. We have nothing under Agenda Item 6, and so that brings us to number seven, Good and and welfare, starting with a report from council.
So, there were two items last night at council. One of them was lighting for Bellarmine College for their field. That was approved. I'm sorry, I've been trying to get more information. I think Yezny, he might have asked more questions about that, but I couldn't find a person who could tell me the answers, but it was approved. The second item was South Bascom Gateway Station, a signature project in the South Bascom Urban Village, and that was approved as well.
Great. Thank you. Onto item B, review and approve action minutes from 8/28/2019. Is there a motion?
I would like to move approval of the action minutes, which I have thoroughly reviewed.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Leba and second by Commissioner Olivario. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, if I could? I just wanted to point out for the record that I have reconstituted myself by watching the entire meeting online and reviewing the minutes, as well as the entire agenda packet. So, I will be more than comfortable voting on this motion.
Great.
Thank you.
All that will just take a verbal, all those, I have to, have to do it. Oh, really? All right. Let's vote. Motion carries. That brings us to the next item, which is Subcommittee Formation Reports in Outstanding Business. Is there anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Onto Commissioner, Commission Calendar and Study Sessions. Anything?
I don't have any information on that. Do you have anything, Vera?
We do have a, I think, retreat date sort of kind of set at this point.
There is a date. I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
I think it's October 25.
October 25, I believe.
Okay.
I don't think we have a time, but.
And I believe it's a half-day morning, a morning session, maybe till noon or 1:00. I can't recall.
All right.
Are we able to add dates to item 7D here on the, on the go? Or, because we have a date coming that we'd like to propose for the general plan annual review study session on October 23rd. We can bring that back formally on the agenda if need be, but it's possible to add that now for discussion. That'd be great. It's the, so the general plan annual review, we typically will do a study session on the report, kind of reporting out how we're doing, implementing the general plan and its major strategies.
But it's the annual, not the four-year?
Correct.
All right. If there is nothing else under item D, moving on to item E, the public record. Nothing. All right. Then I move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.